And the time is... Good evening, everyone. I'm Councillor Julie Wams and I'm the Mayor of the City of Darabben. And I am also your chairperson's chair in tonight's meeting. It is my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's Hearing of Submissions Committee meeting. I declare this meeting open at 7pm. My name is Councillor Julie Wams and this meeting has been livestreamed via the Cancer website, so the public will be able to view the meeting online. A recording of the meeting will also be made available on the Cancer website as soon as practical after the meeting. First and foremost, I'd like to acknowledge the Warren Jerry, the Warung people, the traditional owners of this land, and pay my respects to past, present and emerging, and recognise their continuing connection to the land, water and culture. Before I commence, I'd also like to introduce you to our councillors I have this evening and senior staff. I have Councillor Dimitri Artis, Councillor Hannan, Councillor Rennie, Councillor... Newton, our deputy mayor, sorry, Councillor McCarthy, Councillor Lawrence, Councillor Greco and Councillor Messina is an apology this evening. This evening, I'd also like to acknowledge our CEO, Peter Smith, and Jacinta Stephens. I also have Sam Hewitt, Carly Bennetts, Rachel Olivia, who are also here this evening. Disclosures of interest, I'd just like to ask if there are any officers or councillors that would like to declare a conflicts of interest for this evening? Do I have anyone that'd like to declare a conflict? If none, then I will move on. Confirmation of minutes of the previous minutes from a meeting that occurred for the submissions committee that was held on the 26th of May last year. I need to have a mover for that and a seconder. Do I have a mover? Councillor Rennie and a seconder was Councillor McCarthy. I'll put that to vote. All those in favour? That is carried unanimously. Thank you. Councillor Occupational Health and Safety Responsibilities. Councillor has an occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure anyone attending tonight's meeting, both online, may feel safe physically and emotionally. Consideration of reports, councillors. Before we begin, can I please request that you ensure that your microphones remain on mute unless you are speaking? Thank you. You will now, we will now move into the matter before us on tonight's committee meeting. Tonight, we are hearing verbal submissions from members of the community on priorities you feel are important to you. All written and verbal submissions will be considered and helped inform the preparation of the draft budget 2023 to 2024. Councillor's budget, which will go to Councillor on the 22nd of May for consideration. We have 10 submitters this evening that we should be heard. I remind councillors and all our viewers watching online that this evening is simply about hearing of submissions and no decisions on these matters will be made this evening. I'm going to exercise my discretion and allow each submitter to have up to five minutes to speak in support of their submission. The Hearing of Budget Submissions, councillors. Are there any questions to our officers regarding this item? On our submissions this evening? If not, then I'm going to ask the committee that you have five minutes. This evening, my first speaker that I have on my list is Jessie Saroski. Is Jessie available and would like to speak kindly? Please come up to the lectern. Thank you. You have five minutes, Jessie. The clock will begin.
Okay. Sorry, I am a bit unprepared. I'm in the third trimester of pregnancy and things have just been a bit hard. So my request is for a footpath in six Titus Court Reservoir, sorry, well, in Titus Court Reservoir. So my request was originally lodged in 2020. I was told in 2020 that it missed the budget for 2021 and that it would be considered for an application in 2022. That was by Kevin Delu. I was told that I'd be contacted around April 2002, however, no contact was made through to me. So I sent an email in November 2002 and the response I received back was in relation to Your Street, Your Say and to fill that out and that it'd be looking at getting a footpath in 2024 and being reviewed then. So my main issues are that at the moment I am pregnant, I'm due in May and there is no safe place to push my pram. The only way that I can push my pram is on the road. In terms of my son being able to ride his bike, again, in terms of the road, I can only, like, he can only ride it within the court to be able to get out to the footpath. We've got two bends in our court, so it isn't very easily to see if cars are flying down the road. And a lot of times when cars do take a wrong turn, they do fly down our court. So a lot of the nature strips in the houses in our court are not maintained. So we do have a lot of houses that do generally have a lot of high grass, so it is pretty much impossible to push a pram on the grass and high terrain. And we've also got trees that are in the middle of a lot of the way, so it's not like a straight walk. So we've also got one of our neighbours that have veggie patches and stuff out on the front nature strip. And they also have bees which are in the front part of their house, but it is on that side of the nature strip, so there is a risk of being stung by a bee. I have submitted photos in the past. These have been sent through. We also live near the Northern School of Autism, which I think is important to mention because I feel that if any children with autism lived in our court, that would benefit for them having a footpath to be able to walk to school. We are only a five-minute walk from the Northern School of Autism. Yeah, that's, that's, that's my main point. It's just in relation to safety. And a footpath would really make me feel more safe and, and make me feel more safe for my, for my child and my future child. So, thanks. Is that it? Sorry.
Thank you very much, Jessie. I appreciate your time on that one. I'll go to the second submitter this evening. I have Josephine Montalotol. Thank you.
I just have some handouts.
Sure.
I didn't calculate how many councils we get. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Josephine Montalotol. I'm a resident of Darabben and have been so for 24 years. I am so proud to live in such an inclusive area with so many amazing facilities. I have a three-year-old son who has additional needs. He walks in a walking frame. There's a picture attached there. And if you pull the walking frame, he can take steps around the neighbourhood. He can walk about 900 metres at his maximum. And we used to go around two blocks around Susan Walsh Reserve, which is just on Rathmine Street in Fairfield, it's just on the border of Northcote and Fairfield. And we used to go through the park and get so excited when he got to the swing and he'd love jumping on the swing because you've got a nest swing there, which really does classify his all abilities. Unfortunately, I've also got a picture of him in the nest swing. He doesn't, he cannot sit up and hold on to a nest swing like a typical child. So if you put him on the nest swing now, he will happily roll over and potentially roll out mid-flight. So now when he gets really excited, it really breaks my heart that we just have to go past. There's no swing that he can use. You've got a toddler swing there, but he'll flip back or forward. And you've got the, the typical, just the strap swing as well, but he cannot use that either. So my request is to install an all-access infant swing. You've got one at Penders Park, you've actually got two at Penders Park and you've got one at Bundura Park. Ideally, you'd be like, well, why can't you just go to Penders Park? We cannot physically, it's two and a half kilometres, we cannot, it's 2.2 kilometres, we cannot walk that far in his walking frame. If I was to pack up the walking frame and his pram slash wheelchair, to get all that in the car, get there to do his walk around the swing and then get to his therapy appointments, a physio OT speech that typically start around eight or nine in the morning, it wouldn't be feasible. So that's not an option for us at the moment. I've got a quote for the swing off the same company that did Bundura Park, I believe. I did check the sign on your swing. It's about approximately $1,000 for the, the swing and the, and the chains. Obviously, the mayor explained to me that you may have to build other framework, which would add cost. My proposal is to simply swap it out with the toddler swing, which is up to two years and the swing I'm proposing is up to five years, so it would technically benefit more people. I know there's other children in the area that would benefit from these swings. I, I see them around on our little walks in the morning. So that is my request. In your Darabben Access and Inclusion Plan 2021 to 2026, it states that 8% of your population in Darabben live their day-to-day lives with a disability. And in your plan, you state very clearly that our plan for Darabben is that diversity is celebrated, community recognises the benefits of inclusion and that people with a disability feel like they belong. And that is my request to you tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Josephine. Really appreciate that. And if councillors can kindly pass those submissions around so you can have a read of it, the two other councillors would be greatly appreciated so they can look over them. This evening, my next submission I have is John Crossthwaite. Oh, Jim, sorry. Jim Crossthwaite. Apologies. Is Jim here?
Jim is, hello, Jim is not here, but I'm standing in for him.
If you could just kindly just state your name, that would be greatly appreciated.
So I'm Anne Sanson and I'm the convener of Darabben Climate Action Now and I'm here on behalf of Jim Crossthwaite, who is a member of our planning group, but was not able to be here today. Okay. So Darabben Climate Action Now, D-C-A-N, is a local community group with over 5,000 supporters across the municipality, which has been working with Darabben Council and other levels of government for over 13 years to stimulate action on the climate emergency. So Jim had two key messages that he wanted me to pass on. I do have a handout, which I hope has gone around to everyone summarising this. One is that the significance of the climate emergency and council's role in addressing it is underplayed, certainly in the draft, in the budget survey that we all received, and that the climate emergency should be a cross-cutting theme across all areas of council's policy and operations with dedicated funding and resourcing. So probably everybody in this room knows that Darabben was the first municipality in the world to declare a climate emergency, which has now been followed by 2,100 other local governments in 39 countries. So we're known around the world for this distinction. And we all know that Darabben has done some really impressive work on this, like the power purchasing agreement and working hard to minimise emissions with the Northcote Aquatic and Recreation Centre rebuild. And we also know that the climate emergency team here has been working really hard, especially on the new climate emergency plan, which is already a year out of date. But we in D-C-A-N are really concerned that Darabben is falling behind many other councils, which are now taking more serious climate action, because we've got very little time to act, to have a chance to protect ourselves, to protect the residents of Darabben from runaway climate catastrophe. We must reduce emissions dramatically this decade. That's less than seven years that we have left. So we think there should be more active leadership on the climate emergency within Darabben Council. We suggest that this leadership should come from the CEO's office to establish the climate emergency as a cross-cutting issue across all council operations with adequate funding to ensure effective coordination across council. Perhaps it should be the principal role of a staff member within the CEO's team. And this, of course, is in additional to the climate emergency team, which is understaffed at the moment and should be fully staffed as quickly as possible, in part so we can take advantage of the new government, state and federal government programmes that are coming out all the time now. So in doing the survey, filling out that survey, we found it really hard to do because all 12 areas of operation in that survey on the budget, of course, are critical areas for the council and climate change should be a central focus in all of them. So all of us are going to be affected by climate change. All Darabben residents will be dramatically, if not catastrophically, impacted if we don't cut emissions fast. And council, we think, has a crucial role to play in protecting the wellbeing of its residents, both by mitigating climate change, for example, by cutting emissions across the municipality and by building capacity for adaptation and resilience. So we think that managers and staff in all operation areas should be really well-educated in about the implications of climate change for their areas so they can integrate it effectively into their programmes and become effective ambassadors in the community. So like climate change, social justice is another cross-cutting theme, as we know, and, but that includes climate justice. Those who are already vulnerable are going to be worst impacted by climate change. So it makes climate justice a really critical area for Darabben Council's work in aged care, childcare, ethnic communities, the disability sector, low-income help households, renters and so on. So a few examples of that might be, well, there's significant opportunity for action to simultaneously reduce emissions, reduce energy bills and build climate resilience among all those vulnerable groups through things like retrofitting houses for energy efficiency, installing solar, transitioning off gas. So we think besides investing further in the Solar Savers Programme, which has been a big success for council, we should think Darabben should create a similar programme for getting off gas. Maybe Darabben could emulate Port Phillip Council, which has got a community impact officer who can directly support residents with water and energy efficiency, switching from gas to a fully electric home, advice on renters, for renters on making their homes more sustainable and so on and so forth. We think there need to be a lot more programmes to encourage and support high-emitting businesses and industries to transition to renewable energy, to support electrification. We really need much more infrastructure to support EVs like curbside EV charging stations.
You've got 15 more seconds if you can just kindly sum up. That would be great.
And so we'll be a willing supporter and partner in helping achieve all of those goals in D-C-A-N. But they do need council leadership and resourcing.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that. Our next submitter that we have this evening is Calvin Wei. Wei, sorry.
Thank you, councillors, for the opportunity to make this submission. I really want to make this submission for my family, really, and primarily so that my family can ride safely around Darabben. We're all keen cyclists, perhaps as a cycle, my four-year-old, who hasn't quite got the air. And in particular, you know, I'm in Thornbury and I just want to make a submission about the suitability of the cycling infrastructure we have in this council and into the future. I should say from the outset that really compared to many parts of Melbourne, I ride quite a bit, we have good cycling infrastructure. But there's no reason why our cycling infrastructure couldn't be excellent and the end of other councils. I mean, we can be a council where, as we move to a carbon less or a decarbonised future, cycling can genuinely be used by the majority of people of all ages to move across the council area. There's lots, there's lots of ways we can do this, but tonight I'm just choosing to focus on two issues that I personally encountered. First, the lack of a connected network of cycling paths or trails or lanes across Darabben and the need to upgrade some network to ensure suitability going forward. In relation to the first point, we have lots of great routes running north-south in Darabben. We have, you know, Mary Creek Trail, Darabben Creek Trail, Olive, very lovely, right near the Northern Pipe Trail. And we have the new bike trail, which I don't think is named yet under the Merda line. But there's not really any great east-west trails to go across Darabben. And certainly not many that are connect family sort of facilities. And I'm thinking in particular of Northcote Library, which is my closest library, which is frankly a nightmare to get to on a bike, and the Northcote Pool, which is, which long awaited. I've sort of, by Googling only really, discovered there is a Christmas Street shimmy that is supposed to be used, but I don't think that even comes up on Google Maps if you plug in a route like that. And thinking about it, there's not really any good routes south of Bell Street that we can use, you know. Arthur Road's very narrow and same with Norman New Avenue, it's very narrow. Certainly not routes that I would trust my six-year-old to ride down unless we use a footpath. So I urge council to really consider some, perhaps some separated bike lanes, which, you know, often in the city with a fence of some sort, to at least demarcate between cycling routes and vehicle routes. Of course, once this infrastructure is in place, it probably needs to be future-proofed. I haven't looked at the stats and I should because I ride past that big sign at the end of Northern Pipe Trail every day. But certainly in the last few years and especially after Covid, it seems like there's many more cyclists on, on the road, whether this is because, you know, they wish to drive less or whether they're trying to avoid crowded spaces. But this has sort of had two main effects in my observation. First is the increasing prevalence of larger bikes, electric bikes, cargo bikes, scooters even. We actually played one, like, sort of in 2019 and, you know, we were, early on, people asked us where we'd gotten from. But now, you know, you see them everywhere and you see every colour of electric bike. But they're large and some of these trails are narrow and windy and they're not very good to use. Moreover, although not here, the bicycle hoops often, you know, they're too narrow to really park between. You get a Preston market and it's hard. And, you know, I saw somewhere, you know, electric, electric charging facilities would be great too, but I can live without that. So I urge the council to consider, consider the building further future facilities and modifying current ones with this in mind. And I think this has a benefit of allowing for other users of, of these paths to have a safe route. I mean, people with larger prams in particular, people with disabilities can also use them. The second observation I make is in relation to the Northern Pipe Trail. And I think serious thought needs to be given to a major upgrade of this. It's a great track sort of north of Arthur Road, but once you head south, south of Arthur Road, you go over and you go down a bit towards Northford High, it's a narrow path and frankly, one where, you know, I'm an experienced cyclist, but I fear getting hit by a car crossing that path often. You know, I'll see someone, an ambulance or something, you know, probably a number of times a year. And certainly people who, you know, drivers who aren't familiar with the area accidentally crossing that path and ignoring a pedestrian. So I'd be grateful, you know, if council considers modifications to that path and especially in relation to Separation Street intersection where cars are often sitting over.
Yeah, 15 minutes. Can you kind of summarize?
Sitting over the intersection. I think a simple fix for that is just extend the turning light by five seconds. Now, I don't know if council controls the infrastructure, but it'd be great to see. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Calvin. Appreciate your time. Our next submitter that we have this evening is Ruth Jelley. Thank you. If you can just... Yeah, sure. I'll get one of our governance persons to come and help you with that. If you can just get up to the lectern.
Well, that's going around. Thank you very much this evening for your time, councillors. My name is Ruth Jelley. I'm here representing a group locally called Streets Alive Darabben. We are a resident and ratepayer action group with a vision for thriving neighbourhoods where streets are used by people of all ages irrespective of whether they choose to walk, cycle, use public transport or drive. Together, we call on Darabben Council to design a fresh streetscape along High Street, Northcote and Thornbury to meet the needs of the people who live, study, work and travel within the local communities throughout Darabben. We're calling on council to deliver on its commitment to provide accessible and sustainable transport systems throughout Darabben as outlined in the refreshed transport strategy, which was unanimously supported by this council in June last year. In keeping with its key promise to the Darabben community, council's forthcoming budget should demonstrate its commitment to the vision outlined in that transport strategy. As part of this, Streets Alive Darabben believes that this budget presents an opportunity for council to invest in upgrading High Street, Northcote and Thornbury north of Separation Street. The section of High Street from Separation Street through to Plenty Road is identified in the strategic framework transport plan as not only a primary multimodal street, but also a key cycling corridor and a primary pedestrian route. Streets Alive Darabben sees an opportunity for a new streetscape in this section of High Street, one that enables the construction of new accessible tram stops, which will make it easier for people of all ages and abilities to use the tram network and providing more safe pedestrian crossings to address a need identified in the recent Your Street, Your Say consultation. A streetscape that includes wider footpaths and the planting of new trees to provide shade, increase pedestrian dwell time in the area, support biodiversity and reduce on-street temperatures on hot days. There are currently no street trees north of Separation Street. A streetscape that prevents dangerous doring incidents, which is a key contributing factor to the deaths of cyclists on similar streets such as Sydney Road in Brunswick and Glenfrey Road in Hawthorn. The recent death of young cyclist Angus Collins on Footscray Road demonstrates the need to ensure that safe, separated cycling, cycling infrastructure is provided as we transition to a sustainable transport system. A streetscape that provides for more pedestrian-friendly environment by reducing car traffic and reallocating on-street parking to make El Fresco street dining a pleasant option. And a streetscape that improves safety at intersections by prioritising trams and people on bikes and improving sightlines to increase safety for pedestrians. The corner of Separation Street and High Street has been the location of three pedestrian deaths over the last 10 years. Streets Alive Darabben calls on council to align its vision for this section of High Street to the objectives of the Transport Integration Act 2010, including minimising barriers to access and actively contributing to the environmental sustainability by avoiding, minimising and offsetting harm to the environment caused by travel and transport. Council can take steps now in its forthcoming, forthcoming budget to allocate funds to commission its own designs for High Street in addition to what the state government may put forward following its 2022 election commitment for accessible tram stops in this section. And two, ensure a total streetscape design is planned, not just for the tram stops, but one that includes pedestrian crossings, separated bike lanes and streetscape build-outs and planting. These actions are not only in keeping with council's refreshed transport strategy and its 2041 community vision for an equitable, vibrant and connected community, which I note is on page four of the agenda this evening, but also responds to the recent Your Streets, Your Say consultation with the public, which yielded many requests from members of the public for accessible tram stops, separated bicycle lanes and safer pedestrian crossings. Thank you very much, councillors.
Thank you very much, Ruth. Appreciate your time coming this evening. Next up as a submitter, we have Christina Di Peridomodico. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you for the opportunity to share with you what Diverse is seeing in the Darabben community and the impacts of the cost of living increases. I'm the executive officer of Diverse, which is the Darabben Information, Volunteer and Resource Service. And I'm joined tonight by Kate and Alan, who are with me, Diverse's Chair and Deputy Chair. And thank you for being here, given the importance of these issues for our board and our community. Right now, there's a 25% increase in communities seeking support and an almost 50% reduction in the food we're able to share with people experiencing food insecurity. And we know this will continue for the foreseeable future. From November of last year, we've seen this 25% increase in demand compared to July of 2022 and that's about an extra 20 to 30 households each week. This is actually the same level of demand as the long lockdown back in the second half of 2021 and it's about 500 households a month that we're sharing food with. We've also started to see people who've not received help before and who have some income from wages or have a mortgage. And we think this will likely increase in coming months with fixed-term mortgages ending and people's savings being used. We're seeing more people presenting because of the cost of food, rent, transport, medical expenses, household goods and clothes, more than double the number of people presenting with issues around social participation and mental health. And there's an increase in people presenting with family violence and family breakdown matters. And we're experiencing this in the context of an almost 50% decrease in the food that we're able to share. There's a fresh produce shortage. In July last year, we received 3,000 kilos of fruit and veg from Food Bank and Second Bite. This has gone down each month. In February, it was 1,500 kilos. The quality is also below what we'd like to share and both organisations have said this will continue. The cost of pantry items has increased. We source pantry essentials from Food Bank and Coles and this is where we spend our food store funding, which is a combination of federal funding from the Department of Social Services and council's emergency relief boost funding. And our dollar, like everyone's, doesn't stretch as far as it did. Donations from local businesses and producers has also mostly dried up as they too are feeling the cost of living and climate impacts. So to manage this, we've had to halve the size of the grocery bags we share, reduce by 30% the pantry essentials we share, reduce by a quarter the people we can deliver to each week and some weeks we've run out of food by the end of the week. Fair Share, who also provide free healthy frozen meals, have said over the next six to 12 months, they're reducing the meals they provide while they expand to a new community. they're reducing the meals they provide while they expand to a new connection. So in 2024, they can provide more food, but not right now. So the slack that was in the system has been all used up. So what's our request of council? In response to the pandemic, in 2020, council funded Diverse through emergency relief boost funds for food relief. And this will end on the 30th of June this year. An increased federal emergency release funding will also end on the 30th of June. I've provided you with a handout and there's a graph there that shows that while the increased funding has ended, community need has not. Diverse Relief values our strong partnership with council and council's trust in Diverse to reach many in our community who experience personal and financial issues, including food insecurity and systemic exclusion and disadvantage. Along with food, our trained volunteers and students provide holistic wraparound support, including information, referrals, advocacy, financial and energy help, material aid, no interest loans and complex case support. Our current expected federal food funding for next year will source about 3,300 pantry parcels. In the eight months of this financial year, we've already shared over 3,000 pantry parcels, reaching over 7,000 people. So we're asking council to contribute $30,000 in next year's budget for food relief, and this will fund an additional 2,200 parcels. Doing so directly responds to council's objective to reduce the impact of poverty and disadvantage, and I know that then together we can continue to meet our community's needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Christine. I appreciate your time coming this evening. The next I have on this evening on our list is Louise Kenny Shen. Is Louise available? Thank you, Louise. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, my submission is that Darabben Council give genuine consideration to the redevelopment and rebuild of the Reservoir Leisure Centre, including a 50-metre pool and diverse community health and wellbeing hub. Uh, Reservoir with 51,096 people is one of Melbourne's, Metropolitan Melbourne's biggest suburbs by land and by population. Um, it's one of the biggest suburbs in Australia. Uh, the population of Reservoir is predicted to grow to over 65,000 people within the next 20 years. Preston's also one of the most densely populated suburbs in Metropolitan Melbourne. The residents in Reservoir and Preston who use the Reservoir Leisure Centre deserve to have access to state-of-the-art health and wellbeing facilities that are open for all. RLC has acted as an activity hub in East Reservoir for many years, but not exclusively for the residents in the immediate vicinity. Um, the service, services that the centre provides are relied on by people all over the north of Darabben. Its busyness is testament to the importance that facilities like this have in our communities and shows how these facilities can be used by residents for greater health and wellbeing outcomes, not only in a physical sense, but in social aspects and providing emotional support through community that is invaluable to many living in that area. I volunteer at the Reservoir Neighbourhood House, assisting residents from cold communities to access local services. Most of the residents I assist have limited English skills, are elderly with age-related disabilities and have limited access to social networks even in their own languages. Some of these residents also live in public and social housing and have been placed in these positions due to disadvantage or family violence. They attend hydrotherapy classes almost every day at the Reservoir Leisure Centre, and these residents have created their, the Chinese-speaking residents have created their own little social support network and meet regularly at the centre to swim, use the facilities at the gym, walk around the complex or enjoy the community garden at the neighbourhood house. My son has been taking swimming lessons at the centre since he was 18 months old. The teachers at Swim School are fantastic and have great outcomes for their students, and they are firm members of our children's lives as they learn and grow in confidence in the water. However, with such a large service scope, many of the classes are crowded, and whilst they do a magnificent job, their ability to teach is somewhat hindered by the size or, and demand of classes. The swimming lessons, particularly on weekends, also infringe upon people using the hydrotherapy pool and as it's necessary to close half of it off to accommodate the sheer number of classes required to service the pool's patrons. There are currently maintenance issues at RLC, which I'm sure you're all aware of. Uh, the Learn to Swim pool has had a plastic safety bollard in it for at least four weeks, which makes a small section of an already crowded pool unusable and leaves parents like myself very concerned about whether or not it's safe to have our kids in the pool. Having previously cut my own knee on a broken tile in that pool, um, it really does raise that question whether or not our kids should actually be in there. Um, the main hallway that leads from the change rooms to the main pool deck's been cordoned off and closed for 12 months now. Um, I've previously asked about this at council and been told it's due to roofing issues and required repair. Um, there's previously been sections of tiling in the bathrooms where duct tape was holding up, um, holding tiles to the wall or holding up a showerhead in the women's bathroom. These are visible cues to the users of the Reservoir Leisure Centre that we don't matter. Whilst other areas are well-funded, maintained, revamped, other councils manage to stop these kind of things from happening, we're expected to make do with a facility that boasts visible dilapidation. In the current economic climate, it's understandable that everyone, including government bodies, have to tighten their belts. However, economic frugality should not come at the cost of health and wellbeing outcomes for our community, a community which is home to some of Darabben's most vulnerable residents. My concern is that many of the, and that of many of those who use the pool that I've spoken to, is that given financial pressures at this time, is that council will choose to spend tens of millions of dollars to implement simple Band-Aid remedies for what is essentially a bullet hole in this facility and in Darabben's provision of facilities to a significant portion of the municipality's population. The number of users at RLC currently is reflective of its value to the community as a facility and to the services it provides. It should be and could be a central hub in East Reservoir that caters to all in the municipality without anybody needing to miss out because another group using the space takes precedence. I know that Darabben has a plan for the use of the space at RLC and the neighbouring reserve to build a splash pad, which is a fantastic lovely idea. However, an outdoor public splash pad requires significant hygiene maintenance and upkeep and would, like the other outdoor pools are, remain unused through nine months of the year. I believe that there is also significant shallow piping underneath the entirety of the T W Andrews Reserve that would require extensive high-cost works to rejig to afford the ability to build said splash pad. There are other uses, uses that could be undertaken of this space that could create a high-quality, low-expended open space for the community, rather than an idea that's not feasible without tremendous financial.
Eight seconds left. If you can kindly summarise.
It would be wonderful to grow the user base and ensure that our children have top-level facilities that they can use as they grow. It would be great to see the upcoming swimming stars in the inner north training.
Time's up, Louise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out this evening, Louise. The next submitter I have this evening is Carol McConville. Is Carol available? Carol's not in this evening. Thank you. I have Molly. Hock? Hope, I apologise. Molly, if you can come up to the lectern.
Thank you. Um, good evening. Uh, I actually had a handout, but my printer malfunctioned, so sorry. I'm going to throw a couple of things at you, um, regardless. Uh, my name is Molly Hope. I live in Thornbury. Um, I'd like to acknowledge upfront that I realise the budget pressures that council is under are very high, not only because of the current economic climate, but also councils provide many, many services to the community and budget resources are relatively low. So the need to prioritise is clear. I'll commend council on soliciting ideas and priorities from the community as the stakeholder engagement is really important. During the budget feedback process, I specifically prioritised the sustainable transport theme over the others, but especially the infrastructure management and maintenance theme. This is not, because I think infrastructure management and maintenance is not important, but rather that I think that smarter allocation of funding towards this sustainable transport theme will ultimately reduce our need for a higher infrastructure management and maintenance budget. Prioritising sustainable transport not only creates a better environment for people to live, where they aren't exposed to as much noise or air pollution from cars, a known issue in Melbourne, particularly around childcare and primary schools, but it also costs the council less money. Cars and trucks are heavy. They cause significant wear on a road, and when they're heavily used by passenger cars, often people commuting with only one person in that car, it costs the council money in maintenance, pothole filling and resurfacing. Council's transport engineers should have this data, but most calculations show that a very heavy bicycle, ridden by a very heavy person, would cause only point zero 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 six the amount of wear on a road as an average car. That means that it would take 17,059 trips by bike to equal the damage caused by one car on one trip. I'll use my street as an example. So I live on Newcastle Street in Thornbury, south of Dundas Street. Every day, cars and trucks use my street as a rat run to avoid traffic lights on Victoria Road. This constant traffic makes the road dangerous for my elderly neighbours to walk around, for those children walking and riding to Whale Street and Penders Grove Primary and Thornbury Kindergarten, and for my own son to play. But not only is the bad design of the street affecting the health of those living on Newcastle and Whale Streets, but it's also costing the council more money to maintain the street. There is one particular pothole that has had to be fixed multiple times in the last two years because of the volume and weight of the traffic driving over it. The bluestone sections of the street have to be continuously maintained because cars knock stones out of place and tear up the bluestone. These are all unnecessary maintenance costs for council because of the design of the street, which prioritises cars. If this street was cut off traffic or the design significantly changed, therefore forcing cars to use Victoria Road, which is designed for higher traffic volumes, it would create a better environment for the residents of those streets and reduce the road maintenance budget for the council. Imagine this scenario replicated over the many other streets in Darabben. Prioritising cycling infrastructure wherever possible saves the council money. In fact, apart from funding it, council could consider incorporating it into their regular maintenance process. When a road needs to be resurfaced or curb or lines redone, those are great opportunities for council to incorporate more cycling and pedestrian infrastructure for less cost. The crew's already out there. Why not take the opportunity to plan these things into every update or maintenance of a road? Not only would that save money during the process, but the fewer cars on the road will also save the council on maintenance in the long run. Fewer cars and more cycling and pedestrian infrastructure is good for residents and business owners in Darabben. Studies have shown that low or no car zones in commercial areas can increase retail revenue up to 30%, and that cyclists and pedestrians spend more money per metre squared of road space. That last study was done in Melbourne. Prioritising these modes of transport and spending the money to do so is ultimately better for council. This is hardly even mentioning, as mentioned by some of the other budget submissions, the environmental benefits of fewer cars on the road, better air quality, a less noisy environment, better water quality in our creeks, as the creeks would no longer get as contaminated runoff when it rains, let alone the environment, oh, sorry, the climate change aspects, but it's an overall healthier populace. All these aspects would make Darabben an even more desirable place to live than it already is. Please consider prioritising sustainable transport funding in this next budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Appreciate it for coming out this evening. Our last submitter, submitter that I have this evening is Luke Smith. Luke, thank you, Luke.
Thanks for your time. Um, I'm really here because I've, I've been a resident of, and an owner in, um, Darabben, in particular in Northcote, for over 20 years. And I firmly believe that protecting and enhancing Darabben's heritage is an important matter. Um, heritage helps tells our story, the story of our community and our environment. And Darabben has a rich heritage and history which I think needs to be protected, or rather better protected. Um, I'm the owner of an old Victorian home and as, as by virtue of that and the crazy decision to try and renovate it and restore it, um, I've come in contact with a lot of heritage matters associated with the council and, um, had a better understanding of the heritage protections and support that there is, um, in Darabben. I guess what I've learned is this, that the, 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 the current heritage review that the council relies upon is almost a quarter of a century old. It's been more than 20 years since a comprehensive heritage study has been done, and during that period of time, an extraordinary amount of development has been done. Um, I guess what else I've learned is that the current, currently, the council doesn't have a heritage planning officer, either on a part-time or a full-time basis. So planning officers and the planning department that I've dealt with are great, but they have no experience and expertise in heritage matters. And I just can't understand how that's consistent with protecting Darabben's heritage properly. Um, I guess what else I've become aware of is that the council doesn't have a dedicated heritage advisory committee. Unlike Yarra, which we join, a committee is needed to provide advice to the council on heritage matters, including Darabben's natural built-in cultural heritage. So, uh, i- i- personally, I, I live in the Ruckers Hill area and, and I've had the experience of not only looking after my house, but, but i- in the neighbourhood more generally. The, the review that's almost a quarter of a century old noted that interwar houses in the area that I live in, in Ruckers Hill, are an important heritage contributor element to the area. Um, and that the street I live in, James Street, is a mostly intact streetscape of Victorian and Wardian and interwar properties. So there's lots of houses of historical significance in the street. But despite this, we continue to see homes, old homes demolished. So I guess succinctly, um, I'd ask that the council give consideration to allocating, um, budget for a more comprehensive Darabben heritage review, um, to be undertaken, to replace the one that was undertaken over more than 20 years ago. I'd submit that in the interim budget be allocated for an im- immediate heritage review to be undertaken of the area, particularly around where I reside in Ruckers Hill, where there's a lot of destruction of heritage built. Um, I'd submit that the budget be allocated for a permanent, suitably qualified and experienced heritage planning officer. And I'd submit that budget be allocated for the establishment or support of a heritage advisory committee. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Luke. Appreciate you coming out this evening. I'd like to thank all the submitters that.
Excuse me, I submitted this morning at the council desk and I emailed my submission as well.
What was your name?
Mary Tuller.
Mary Tuller. Just give me a moment, Mary, and I'll just ask our officers.
Yeah, I, I submitted at the council customer service desk this morning.
Apologies. I believe you have a council, uh, sorry, you have a question. Is that correct?
Yes, I, I want to do a presentation, like, define a presentation.
Um, I'll, I'll hand that over to our.
Through, through, ma'am. I understand that it's not a budget submission, but more of a public question. You advised of that through the council this morning. Can I suggest we take that public question for our March meeting and we'll tell you how you can ask that question at your March meeting? Um, so I'm just advising the mayor. Thank you. It's up to you, ma'am. She'll call.
And I emailed. I did the right thing.
Yeah. A- as I said, this is, this is submissions only to hear people regarding, obviously, things to be impacted for the budget. Um, in reference to your question, the fact that we have strict guidelines and that your question can be submitted in the upcoming, uh, budget hearing.
The council meeting?
The, the, sorry, the council meeting for the budget.
Oh, is this a council meeting for the budget?
No, it's not.
I thought you just said it comes around to you.
Through you, ma'am. We have a coun- normal council meeting for, which accepts public questions, and we're happy to take that ques- your question for that meeting, which is at the end of March, not, not long to go. Thank you.
Because I didn't get any notification that I wasn't allowed, sorry, wasn't allowed to present today, so. It's a bit confusing because we said to have invited them.
Sorry, through you. I believe that advice was given to you through email this afternoon. I'm not sure if you got the email or not, but that, there was some advice given to you this afternoon.
So I can do this in March? Is the council meeting in March?
You're, you're, yes.
Do I have to resubmit it or am I?
No, we, we will take your question and that our officers will take that and have that answered on the night. Okay, thank you. That's, that's correct. Thank you.
And what's the date in March?
I'll get our officers to speak to you. Um, as I said, uh, thank you to all the submitters who have come here this evening. Um, and I would like to, I'll go over to our councillors as I would like to ask for a mover and a seconder. Do I have a mover in reference to tonight's? There's been amendment this evening. It's up on the screen from our officer's recommendation. So if councillors can kindly quick have a look at that and read that, and then I'll ask for a mover. So if councillors can kindly quick have a look at that and read that, and then I will ask for a mover. Councillors, do I have a mover? councillor Lawrence, do I have a seconder? councillor Hannan, thank you. Oh, no, 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 I'll put this item to vote, all those in favour, thank you. Councillors? That has been carried unanimously, thank you very much. Um, oh, excuse me, this is not the time. Our officers will kindly speak to you after the meeting. As there are no further business to consider this evening, I would like to declare the Hearing of Submissions Committee meeting closed at seven fifty PM this evening. Thank you.